If everybody would stand and turn face to the flag, we're gonna say the prayers of ladies, gentlemen, and follow the Lord in the word of prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Most heavenly and gracious Father, I just want to come and say thank you, Father, for us being able to assemble tonight. Father, I just want to ask that you allow us to make all decisions graciously, decently, in your Son Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody here and thank you for your attendance. Uh, we did see some new faces, uh, and there's one face that's not here that's been a trip before our town, she's on sick list, and I was just asking you tonight, if you would, if you'd remember in your prayer, and that's Vicki Burns, and she's our city clerk, and, and, uh, she just needs your prayers, murder family, and I just appreciate that you would do that, so thank you so much. Uh, now we'll have real talk.
Sabrina Doray, present.
Sarah McCord, present.
Jonathan, present.
Barbara Gardner, here.
Jonathan Broth, present.
Full, full council, we'll go to number four, approval of our minutes for previous meeting. Those have been distributed and read, and if any questions or comments on the minutes. I hear motion we approve the minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Autumn Dooray, stated by Autumn Gardner, on the favor.
Is that both sets, ma'am?
Pardon?
Both sets of minutes?
Yes. By both sets, uh, what council was regarding was, we did have a special meeting where we did declare the national, I mean, natural disaster with the riverfront, where we could do what we needed to do to, uh, take necessary precautions to protect our water well and prevent water from coming into our street on the riverfront, and that's what that was for. Freedom stuff to do what we needed to without, uh, handling murky and take funds for mercy to do that, so that's, that's the minutes he's believing to. Okay, number one on our list is review our financial statements for April 2017, and I'm gonna go to Deborah Moe for that.
Um, as of April 30th, 2017, the actual total revenues received by the town of Adalia is 28 million. The actual total expenditures is 27 million for a net change in position of 971,000. Uh, our budgeted totals were, are showing a 1,000,000.4, which I still think that even though we're showing a $460,000 shortage from that amount, I just think overall our projections are accurate. So, questions? And they're all, the detail behind these numbers are available for anyone's inspection at Town Hall.
Again, thank you, Deborah, said Deborah does a good job, and what she said, if you didn't hear, these, these financials are available at City Hall, if you want them, please come in and request them, we give them to you. We, we certainly want you to be informed, and if you don't understand them, you can sit down with us, and we'd be glad to discuss those with you as well. So, is anybody, any ultimate have questions of this month? Okay. All right. Going to item number two, as you know, we had some older vehicles that we, uh, we advertised for and requested bids on, and it is my pleasure to announce we didn't receive the first bid. So, we're gonna have to re-advertise again, uh, maybe there just wasn't a whole lot of people checking into it, or maybe the vehicles are worthy of a budget, but no, really, in all seriousness, we will, we will, uh, rebid, rebid these vehicles. Uh, I don't have that list with me, if does anybody in, in the meeting want me to go back over what these vehicles are? Anyone? Anyone on the count of four? Okay, so number three. Each year we have to adopt our millage rate, and the millage rate for our town has been pretty consistent, the lowest it can be for years, and what it's based on is, is the amount per thousand dollars of your home that's, it is assessed at, is what you pay your millage rate at. And then, in the past, uh, the last year, the millage rate was 3.37, no, uh, 3.39, and that's what it's gonna remain, and I need resolution from the, from the board that we, uh, make a resolution to make that our millage rate. Motion made by Autumn. Second by Autumn Probst, on the favor. Okay, item number four, uh, last week, with, I mean, last meeting, we prefiled our new ordinance, uh, or introducing ordinance for our public hearing, I mean, adoption of flood damage prevention ordinance, it replaces, it replaces ordinance number 565. And what it is, is being, this is being required by FEMA, and it's essentially the same as the old ordinance, except that the new ordinance requires that manufactured homes have the bottom of the steel frame elevated to or above the base flood, whereas the old ordinance only required them to be elevated at or above the finished floor level. And this is in accordance with the new FEMA regulations, which qualifies us for funding front end and to get paid by, and it's also been adopted by Dr. Ford Parrish. So, at this time, can I hear motion we go into public hearing on the adoption of this ordinance? Motion made by Autumn and Beth, second by Autumn Gardner, going to public hearing, on the favor. We're now in public hearing, I will take comments from... If none, we'll refer to the council to comment.
I make the motion we close the public hearing.
Motion made by Autumn and Doray, closing public hearing, second by Autumn Gardner, on the favor. Okay, now, do I hear motion for us to, uh, adopt the flood damage prevention ordinance that replaces number 565? Motion made by Autumn, Autumn, Autumn and Gardner, second by... Second by Autumn Probst, on the favor. Item number five, uh, I don't know if this has been done on regular basis in the past, but there's a reserve amount for our hydro fund, it is required by 588 ordinance to set our reserve fund, and last year that reserve fund was 2.3 million dollars. When we came into office, that reserve fund was, was not where it should be, and we've been able to replace that reserve fund, get it back up to the 2.3 million dollars. Now, the calculations, you have to take your two highest projected monthly, uh, production rates and figure out what you would have to do to buy a pile for two months, and that's what you have to put in reserve. That amount this year on the calculation's gonna be 1.9 million. So, but, tonight, I'm going to suggest that we keep it at the 2.3, and then deal with it, uh, after the first of the year, after the first fill of the fiscal year, what I'd like to do is have hold the hydro meetings that are also required annually by law, that we have two public hearings, we talk about the excess monies we may have in the hydro fund, and what to do with it, if it's gonna involve any capital projects, rebates, or whatever, so that's the things I want to do. But I would like to, I would like to request, even though it requires for us to do that at 1.9, if that's the council's desire, we'll do that, if not, I'd like to leave it at 2.3, and I'd be glad to take discussion of that.
What is, what do we have in that reserve?
The total reserve right now, uh, I think is 2.8 million, actually, we have 2.8, but we still have to purchase power for...
Oh, two months. Two months.
Two, two more months, so. So, we'd like to, you know, make sure that we...
Before we get our next royalty.
And it's, we also cleared which one we, it's, uh, ordinance called for 1.9, but it's at 2.3, and it's whatever you want to do, or we can look at it, we gotta set it either 2.3 or 1.9, whichever you want to do.
I say 2.3, I agree with you on that. Man, the river looks good this year for royalties.
And, and what we can do, Autumn and Probst, is when we have these meetings later, we can, at that time, if we want to adjust it down, and whatever the public wants to do, we listen to you, what you want to do with the funds, we'll, we'll make that determination at that time. But we'll probably do that, probably in our August meeting, just for information that we'll be having these meetings and looking to do the right thing with the hydro monies. Okay. Motion made by Autumn and Probst, stated by Autumn, Beth, on the favor. Believe it 2.3. Okay. Down to, it's back on our agenda, the discussion of selling our Eleanor street property and John Dale drive property, this has been a rather lengthy process. However, we get to a point, then we back up and, and we, uh, keep doing everything, we have to get appraisals, so we got appraisals, and those things have taken time, we got the appraisal, they're in place, and now it's just us, I brought it back up, put it on the agenda, there, we can't auction or take sealed bids on it, and I put it on the agenda tonight for council to discuss tonight whether or not they would like to auction our bid. Uh, there's pros and cons to each, and I would just like to hear recommendations and discussion from, I mean, what you would like to do, where you want to auction or do, or take bids, and where to auction it at, we can do it here or in the [inaudible].
I would like to do auction here.
Okay. Anybody on the floor have a comment to answer?
What was the appraisal, can you tell us that?
It's, it's public record, it was, uh, 35,000 on the Eleanor property, and I think...
3,000.
Or 3,000? Okay. Okay. Was that... 3,000. Go for certified appraisal. Any other question, I mean, we have, Autumn and Doray would like to do an auction and have it here?
First, the property on John Dale, is it just a lot?
Yes, ma'am, it's just a lot.
Okay, thank you.
It's just a lot.
Well, I thought we were gonna discuss it with everybody else, we need to do. I make the motion, we put it up for auction, we hold the auction here.
All right, you want to set a date for that, would you like to?
I mean, we've been beefing off of this for a while, I'd like to go as quickly as possible.
We, well, we have to probably put it at least, I'd say three weeks, so we advertise and give us time to do that, so.
Okay.
We can set a date and a time, and, uh, council, what, what is your recommendation of, as far as, don't you think three weeks, we do need to do the advertising on it, that it's gonna be, and then it's gonna be an auction?
Give them enough time to, to know what's going on.
Isn't that right, council?
Sir?
Doesn't that have to be posted for 30 days in our, in our journal?
I'm not, I look at, I'm not sure about that.
I think, I think whatever you need, that's what it's...
With dealing with real property, it might be 30 days, but all your other immobiles and, and things, let them for two weeks.
First, what is the address to the household Alvinah?
474.
174?
274.
274?
Yes.
Let's say 32 days from today at 6:00 p.m.
Okay, call that to you, call that to you. Is that, any questions? Okay.
That's why I did 32.
Was there a second? Who was the second, please?
I'll second.
Second was Autumn and Beth, all in favor? All right, we'll move on. Item number seven is adoption of resolution to award the bid for the electrical distribution line for the port today. Line Tech Services, uh, awarded the bid at 203,086 dollars and 28 cents, and I see Heather and Keith Kepden on with the Hammont Group, and I, they want to address the, uh, this a little bit, to just give you an explanation what it is. Keith, would you like to address this?
This, this project is just carrying the, uh, the day's power, free face power from, I think it's DA Big Lane, where the SS Highway 131, hold down 131, hold down Port Road, over the levee to, to their proposed truck turnaround. Got a good price on it, too, it's really good. Got a good bid.
That was even way under expected.
Yes, sir, it really did.
I mean, some of the, I was looking at some of the bids, they, they were pretty substantial, so, uh, Line Tech Services, it may be good. But anyway, any questions from the council? Do I hear motion, we...
Make a motion.
Second by Autumn McCoy, on the favor. Okay, moving on to number eight. adopted resolution to award bid for street drainage improvement project on Front Street, Camo Productions Company Incorporated, was the low bidder at 318,476 dollars. And what this is, I'm also gonna refer to, defer to, uh, to Mr. Kepden to go ahead and explain that project.
This is, this is funded by GOSET, and it's basically what, what we thought this past month, what y'all and God thought that wouldn't involve too much, but this is gonna keep, up to a certain point, it'll keep the, uh, keep the river out of the street with these gates we're gonna put in, and these [inaudible]. And quite frankly, we got good bids on this job, too, so.
And, any questions?
What did it cost us this past flood to do this without these gates?
I think, I'm glad you asked, and we did put it up for bid to the, to putting and removal of Tesco baskets across our, our boat ramp and around our water well number one, which was, we had to do that, and because if we hadn't done it at the time we did, and we had any kind of event north of us, it would've maybe put our, our water well in jeopardy. So, we went ahead and did the necessary work to get that bid done. However, with, uh, we looked at it, and we thought maybe that since we initially were going to do the, the, uh, the landing, and it was just that little strip, so we actually used, uh, Guy Murray from the Hammont Group, and he worked with Lee Stag in the street department, and we saved the town a significant amount of money, us putting them up ourselves and taking them down ourselves. And I want to commend Lee and Guy for doing a good job and saving the town a lot of money, so, because from my understanding, unless it meets some certain criteria, that might've not been refundable from, from GOSET, not even from the FEMA or GOSET, but what, uh...
Did you, she actually, how much you spent, did your, did yours?
Well, the lowest bid was $30,000, and Lee and his staff, we spent just half a day on exactly that right. Well, it was, it was about three quarters of the day on one, and we took advantage about the same amount.
So, all was in, in terms?
Yeah, all in terms, except for the cost of what Guy was, uh, charged from his professional services contract at Hammont, which I promise you is a substantial savings, and again, they did a good job of doing that, and I think that this is a good thing. What it does is, is prevents, uh, this would give us enough, even though we did have to, we had, we had to go purchase the baffles to put into the drains to keep from backing in, but it's still, y'all know we still had two flood events down there, because we had substantial rains two, two different days, and it caused some flooding. So, what this is gonna do is gonna actually leave it, it's gonna put the pumps in there that can actually pump that water out, the GOSET is paying for us 100%, um, and they're gonna do it for 100%, and that will probably, we hope, unless it's something, uh, denim springs tied back and ribbon rain, 30 something inches, we should be protected for, for a significant rain, is that correct? Yes, that's right. This will essentially do the balance that you put in the culvert, and we'll still have to do something to boat ramp to keep that water out, but it'll eventually, it'll essentially take care of everything but that. And, you know, unless it's a, part of your rainfall, we should be, we should be okay.
So, this 318, this is, this will all be refunded?
It's 100%, it's, GOSET is gonna pay it, that's...
It's 100%.
It's 100% refundable now, doesn't, again, we usually have to write that check to do that, and they reimburse us.
It's reimbursed, that's correct.
Got it.
Any other questions?
Can we, can we take a little bit drainage all up to the city?
We're working on that.
It's a citywide issue, not just the riverfront.
We're talking about that, and I, I want to encourage everybody to show up, uh, at our next meeting, we're gonna have a capital projects that we're gonna be discussing, and we're looking at something that will, that will be substantial for our city, and I think y'all will be proud of it. It's gonna take, one of the things Guy did tell us from the project we're talking about doing, when we started, it takes almost five to seven years for completion, so, so you don't have any time, and that's pretty crazy, but, and I'm excited about the ideas that we've got, and I think it's gonna be something that y'all will be comfortable with inside the city, so. That being said, do I hear motion that we accept that, that bid? Motion made by Autumn and Probst?
Same.
Autumn and Doray, on the favor? Okay. Item number nine, the public hearing and adoption of ordinance to annex Cypress Point subdivision to the city limits. This ordinance was prefiled on October of 2016. We, the works being completed, when we looked at it, we prefiled that ordinance, we backed up, because there were some things that we didn't follow, it's for our codes are concerned, and also our ordinances on, on annexing property, we went back, we did all those corrective measures, we did everything that was supposed to be done, our planning commission is operating and operating properly, and with notice, and they are coming, uh, and they have put their stamp on it, and we've got all the, uh, the, the completion orders, that's been done, it's been inspected by not only engineers, but also our, our people, our Mark, and also all the people in our, I think, Fire Chief Evans has also inspected the, uh, infrastructure there for our fire, and we're going to open up the public hearing now, and I'd like to motion for that, to, for us to enter to that public hearing and discuss.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Autumn, uh, Doray. I hear a second, second by Autumn McCoy, on the favor? We're now in public hearing. Anybody on the floor have a comment or question? Okay.
I just want to say that the planning committee, um, once we were asked to look at and give our [inaudible], I want to commend them because the members of the committee actually went out.
Wow.
And we, I tell you, they got [inaudible] out there, too. They went out on their time and looked at the property, looked at what was going on, Mr. Nap did an excellent job, thankful for the, thankful for the maps, so that we could actually understand what was going on there. So, it was impressive to see what they've done so far. This is very...
Cassandra's the chairman of our planning commission, and she does a good job of it. They're, they're operating and functioning, doing what they're supposed to do, and that's, that's exciting, so. Any questions from the floor before we go to the council?
Did the fire truck go down on that street on the cul-de-sac?
I want to defer to Fire Chief.
We can get down the street there where the cul-de-sac itself is, uh, the way the, the side of the street are made, the curves there, if we have to get the tire up on the edge of the curb, we could do that, but, uh, as far as the cul-de-sac goes itself, we've got a fire plug at the end of the cul-de-sac, and one right at the beginning of where the cul-de-sac starts. So, worst case scenario, we could pull in there and back up and still hook to that plug, and be able to utilize some fire trucks from there.
What about two of them? I guess they'd go up on the curbs.
It had to be inspected, so, and that's a good question, I mean...
Most children walk, they walk a corner, you know, but that is...
It's supposed to be the same size as any other cul-de-sac, the only difference is the very center of it is gonna still have the grass and the dirt there, where the other cul-de-sacs are all completely the road itself.
And now, you said that, uh, and Mr. Bill McDonald's asked a question, and Bill asked a good question, I know my little dog would, and that's a cul-de-sac, I've never seen a bus at the end of the street, those kids walk to the end and get off, and that's probably, probably the same type. I bet you walk [inaudible]. I bet you walk [inaudible].
Sure. Just know if I drove down, it's beautiful. Just one question, it doesn't really have anything to do with the [inaudible] today. I noticed that there's potential to, to go straight, is that gonna be gated off, or do you have plans to expand?
No, right now, there is no plans to expand, we left that option there for some future development, and knowing in advance that whoever does any future development, that that road, uh, can never be a through road all the way to Carter Street, that's part of the covenants are in place, so, it's possibility somebody could add a cul-de-sac in there and do some small developing, but...
Right.
They'll know in advance that that can never be a through road, but...
They can't, like, you couldn't circle back around a hill or anything, it just has to stay within itself?
That, that would be a possibility, I think, that would be up to the next development.
It does look like that.
What, what about the, I mean, back here in the [inaudible], I went down there, that little, that's some low lying land, and once it's built up to put a house on, then that water's gonna roll down into the houses in front of, into the yards in, in front of. So, what have they got in place that's gonna drain that? I mean, we've got drainage issues all over the city, what is there to keep us from believing that that's gonna drain when other areas of the cities are draining properly?
The engineer says it's built expectant, and it'll drain, so I'm, I'm trusting them to do their job, I'm not an engineer, I don't claim to be.
Okay, so if it doesn't, is that gonna be the city's responsibility to go in there and, and get that drainage done, is that, is that gonna be on our back?
Well, I mean, if that's the case, but I mean, it's, they have done what they proposed to, and they built it inspected, and I would ask, I said, Mark, I think, uh, Mark, you've looked at that, have you got any comments on it?
Keith, she had asked for that, they were inspecting it, I didn't really inspect the drainage.
Keith, I mean, Mr. Kepden, you need to address that.
Made of it. We've got subsurface drains that go straight to the canal, it's a pretty straight shot, I, 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 I don't, I don't see any issues.
Not in a flood zone, nor is anybody gonna be required to have flood insurance to build,
Is that on the 100, I'm hearing 100, or is that on the 500? First, when I was growing up, that was one of the lowest spots in Bedeville, it was a slough, I mean, it belonged to the Murries, and there was water back there, and I know they built it up, but a lot of it is concrete that they brought, I'm, I'm serious now, I, I saw it, and, and I'm not being ugly, I'm just stating a fact.
Well, I, I mean, the street should, the street should, I mean, get the water off of it and drain, too, I mean, I'm just trusting engineers did their job, again, and, and as, if they're saying it's adequate, we, that's, I'm sure the lots, when they build, I'm sure the lots will be built.
But they did, they said they did this on [inaudible].
I'll tell you, I went back there to look, and it don't look like they spared no expense.
No, that's nice.
It's as nice as anywhere you want to go, and I don't think they're gonna have any problems selling, and I, I think it's just a, a very nice thing to have.
Yeah, it is very nice. I think you're not having any problems.
No.
Any other question from the floor? Okay, home council, any question? Okay. All right, I hear motion to close public hearing, motion made, second.
Second.
Second by Autumn Probst, on the favor? Okay, now, any question from council ready to make a motion to accept this, adoption of this ordinance?
I'll make that motion.
Both made by Autumn.
Second.
Second by Autumn Probst, on the favor? Okay, item number 10, occupational license, uh, CP and ER Ventures LLC doing business as Bud Hut on 1100 Carter Street, this is a change of ownership, our man [inaudible]. Okay, you'd like to talk, tell us, uh, tell us you make any changes, [inaudible].
No, I, I'm Christopher Patterson, but no, I'm not making any changes, I plan on keeping it exactly the same. John Parks and Milan Parks, the ones that owned it, and we are family, we're related, so, it's, he just had too much going on with his other restaurants, and he's asked me if I'd just take it, so, but we plan on keeping it just the same, and I...
Give the card, give it.
Everything's still good.
Good question.
So, yeah, everything's staying the same.
Thank you very much, we hope that if you need anything, that we could certainly support you, and we do all our business in Bedeville, and if you need anything from us, please let us know.
All right, thank you.
Do I hear motion we accept them? Motion made by Autumn Beth, second by Autumn Doray, on the favor? Okay, next is Peoples Choices Staffing LLC, this be actually coming, is this coming? Ms. Cundy?
Hi.
Um, yes, I used to work at West staff for 14 years, so I just developed, uh, just started
to move two doors down, which is beside St. Louis Jones, to start people's staffing, so...
Thank you very much, uh, I know, hopefully with Project Bullet that we got on going, and that, uh, that's gonna be something that you can get real busy, real fast, we hope, so.
Are y'all gonna do temporary employees?
Yes.
I worked at West staff in high school, I loved it. Um, so y'all can do temporary employees and everything? The same structure as West staff was?
Yes, this is, changed the name, it's not a franchise, so it's just the whole family branding.
Motion made by Autumn McCoy, second by Autumn Gardner, on the favor? Okay. Item number 11, discussion of adoption of a new employee handbook, we're not going to adopt it tonight, however, I just do want to put the, uh, council on notice that those have been available for a while, they have suggestions for us to change our employee manual, our last employee manual was dated 1992, before internet, and we, and we had our even just cell phones, I think cell phones... we had, or even just cell phones, I think cell phones were maybe just starting to come out, so there's been a lot of things changed, labor law, things dealing with, uh, everyday workplace, and we're trying to get updated, and that's one of the things we've done. A lot of people work real hard on this handbook, and we are, I would like to adopt it maybe in our first meeting, uh, in July, after regular meeting, and I would just encourage the council to read it if they haven't yet, and please, see if they ever come in and discuss with us anything they don't like on it, or if they'd like to change, or give your opinion, and if there's something that's an action item we need to take, we'll take, and we'll, we'll get in a meeting and maybe make those changes, and we can vote on them individually in council meeting, so. Any questions on that?
When an employee is hired, what are they receiving right now as their handbook? Excuse me. Is it the nineteen ninety-two version?
It would be the nineteen, that's the one that would be in place, that's correct. Okay, that's just for information, okay. Item number twelve, we're going to adopt a resolution for the new rental agreement on the DMV building of the state of Louisiana, and I'm going to let, uh, council and also our Bill Murray to discuss a little bit about that, and.
I'll start, the, uh, in fact, we got a letter from the DMV that proves that there was now the ability to, for us to, if we wanted to, to change the, the fee, part of the fee we get on some of the transactions that they do there, not all of them, from three fifty, or three, what is it?
Three dollars.
Three dollars, four fifty, dollar and a half or more per transaction. At the same time, we heard from the man from batteries who's here now, is framing out the office operation down there, cleaning up, that he wants, he would like for us to, it is true, it's been there a while, to refurbish it, to do some painting, some built-in desk repair, some balance changes, some, we're responsible for the maintenance that I do, for the grass, for just about everything as far as being structurally sound, air conditioning replacement, we got to do all those things. So what we're, we're doing is just presenting to the board the option to, if we want to do a new contract, would we agree with them? And if we can, we're going to have an expense. And the three dollars, Jay ran a, uh, calculation on it, what would you say, and it was twenty-five thousand?
Twenty-five thousand.
A year, annually. Of course, the building was built, we had to replace the cost of building, utilities, we take care of the utilities, it's a lot of expense for us on an ongoing basis, and we haven't actually calculated whether the twenty-five thousand breaks even or doesn't, probably doesn't. So we, we're asking that the council consider us getting a higher part of the fee. And George has all the documents, I'm just going to talk to him.
How long, how long do you have to make the agreement?
We have to have, if we're going to do it, in these.
How much longer do you have to make, I mean, that's what I'm saying, if you're going to do it, how much longer do you have to?
Well, the resolution has to be done tonight, before the end of fiscal year, and then we have to get with them as quickly as we can to go ahead and get them prepared. But guys, here, while he's here, he would like for us to do it, you know? He's pointing out what he'd like for us to do down there, so he can kind of oversee that, that work, with our guys, we're going to do it in-house. And, um, so I was, if we can, if we can get an approval tonight for a figure, to have the same agreement with a new figure, and again, the state allows us to the four fifty amount. If we can go ahead and make the agreement right away, no reason to hesitate, I'm going to go ahead and get the work done. He's going to be here probably another six weeks or so, so that's the kind of way.
One of the things to keep in mind, this is going to be, it's not for all transactions, it's going to be, and, and I think council has what, what transaction is limited to, but it's going to be anybody that uses the DMV office, they can pay residents from it, from Catahoula, anywhere they come in, that transaction fee is going to be a, a benefit for us. And they're using that building, and, and that's just, it's a dollar and fifty tacked on to the three dollars. I'm going to recommend the.
Okay, Buzz, I mean, I'm not being ugly, but I'm shipping my packages over to Natchez because it's cheaper to get them over in Natchez. And I understand you're saying three dollars, but a dollar fifty increase per which transactions are we talking about?
Just that council, that, yeah, council, that, I'm afraid of that.
And that's one side of the issue, the other side of the issue is when you're considering a couple of, how much money are we going to leave? A lot or a little?
Well, my father was Mississippi Howard Troman under in Natchez, and I don't remember him ever saying that there was an additional fee tracked on, so, I mean, if I get the option of mailing it in and no additional fee, I'm going to do that.
Well, we need to know.
Because every time I go in, if I got to pay three dollars for, well, four fifty now for a transaction, I'm like, okay, we have a farm, I have a lot of big hippos, and that can add up. Is that for tax as well? Is that for tax?
I don't know, I don't know, he's got.
No, this ain't joke.
No, I don't think.
This, this has nothing to do with the fees that motor vehicles charge the customers. This is.
Why isn't they coming in?
This is a fee that they give to the town.
Out of their.
Per certain transactions out of their money, it's not an extra fee.
But they pass that fee on to us?
They pass on to us? Inevitably, if I.
This doesn't say that.
Well, is the twenty-five thousand a year that we're making now not enough to keep the building up?
I mean, that's two thousand, almost twenty-one hundred a month.
Well, if you don't calculate it in the cost of building, the building?
That's, that was my question, for that reason was to decide, how much are we spending? How much have we been spending, and how we consider that, how can we come up with a fee?
We're renting buildings in Vidalia for a lot less than twenty-one hundred dollars a month, and I just don't, I, it, when I heard about this originally, I thought this is taxation without calling it taxing. I mean, we're charging people a fee so that we can turn a profit, well, the, the DMV is tacking on a fee and paying us, we're already collecting nearly twenty-one hundred dollars a month, which may not cover all expenses, but how many times have we had to go in and do new work on the building? I mean, how, how often of an occurrence do we have to go in and make new repairs?
Well, most of, we've been here several times, including air conditioning, which wouldn't.
What are the utilities, Ron, you know? Utilities, I, I'm, now, this is strictly a guess, I mean, it's.
We paid the utilities for it?
We paid utilities, we did.
Kind of like the rubber plant.
Pardon?
Kind of like the rubber plant.
We cut the grass.
We cut the grass, we trimmed the trees, we, we cleaned it up, I mean.
Built the building.
We, we did a lot, we paid insurance. Paid insurance, it's, it's, it's costly, I mean.
But our.
Mr. Weeks?
When they set it up. When they said, they were going to move it, they're on the highway, they're going to leave.
Yeah.
They're going to Winsburg. So they set it up, the city did that, and you can go there and pay three dollars and drive to Winsburg. So if we don't have them, we're going to have to go to Winsburg.
Now, we're not the only municipality.
No, that's, that's what, they were moving out.
Well, they don't take three dollars worth of gas bill in Winsburg.
But if they're not changing this amount, they're not going to, you're going to increase it, increase it to three fifty, wow, you know, that's a dollar fifty. I mean, they say they're setting price.
I'm going to, I'll recognize and let you have them check, Ms. Blige.
You said you got to take three dollars to go to Winsburg, I go to Shreveport twice a week. Winsburg is almost an hour drive, and then you got to look at the inconvenience of getting up there, standing in line, my time is important to me, I would have to have to drive to Winsburg right, right up the street.
Are they breaking? They're not breaking, they're not.
Can I make a recommendation?
Sure.
I think, I think we, if you're going, you're planning to have a special meeting to adopt the budget for the end of this month.
Right.
As long as we can do something, if we can make a decision before the end of this month, that's all they're asking for us to do. And the decision is not necessarily to go for four dollars, fifty, whatever it is, if we can, if we need, we need some more answers, we need to know more about what it costs us.
Right, that's why I asked, like, want to do that before that can be.
Let me ask this question. Are they saying that if we don't do, I mean, is there a threat that they're going to leave?
No.
Okay, so that is, that is not an option that we would have to drive to Winsburg. I can tell you, I'm voting against it, I don't need a special.
No, let, let, let me clarify that. They, the, the state is happy with the arrangement. They are, they are requesting us to go and incur a lot of expense on doing a lot of repurposing to the building. They're saying for you doing that for us, we are willing to go give you four dollars and fifty cents for your transaction, for our transaction fee, for you doing that for us. They're not saying we're going to go anywhere. They're saying, they're offering that because.
Buzz, Buzz, we need to, we need to be sure and be clear, if they're adding two fees or if they're just going to pay us more on the.
That's all.
There's questions that we need to get answered.
Yeah, they have a call.
And we, and we'll, and we'll do that, and we'll, we'll come back, and I guess for the next meeting, we'll, we'll have that, uh, and we, we have, we have this, and we'll, we'll make our clarity, I promise. But from my, my consensus, what I'm hearing is, nobody wants to see a dollar fifty put on that fee. Is that, is that basically what I'm hearing? I mean, I, I mean, what you think is important.
This is what they're saying is important, they're saying that we come in here and we got to come out with another.
Even if it doesn't go, if it's not something that they, I'm going to recognize, I'm going to recognize one of my old classmates who retired from Louisiana State Police, works there and has worked there.
I'm retired.
Cindy, go ahead.
But they can go to Jonesville and avoid the three dollar fee.
Okay. So it is a man on.
The fee is added on.
Oh.
I'm in motion, but it's not.
A motion made by Alden Dory that we leave it at the three dollars. Second. Say by Alden McCoy, on the paper. Okay, item thirteen, adoption resolution to approve application for grant funds from the FHWA Recreation Trails Program. What this is, is there, there's a, there's, the Zaya Trail Project, there was an ongoing project that is trying to do connectivity throughout our town to connect our, our recreational areas in our town, riverfront, complex, sick park. I went and met with, with, uh, the director of that program and had a, at least visit with him, and they said they really don't like to do circles in the park, y'all, we've all seen that. What they want to see and what the funds are available for, that he can get us funding for, is connecting neighborhoods, whether it's bike trails, walking trails, to get them to these areas, walking or biking, and also from the riverfront to this, to this area. And, and what we're trying to do is, we're, we're investigating how we can do that. Of course, we know that the old railroad spur was an option at one time, but that required crossing a highway. I don't like that idea of putting kids and people walking across our main highway, across a railroad spur. But as long as we're connected and they can go back around and bypass all that, and we can connect those things, there's monies available for us to do that. For those people who like to bike and walk, it's free to walk, and, but it's something that, all this is, is I'm going to need a resolution approving us to make an application for this grant, because we got to get it in before the end of the year, for the money to be available and for us to apply for. The man's telling us we can get it, and he's telling us we can get a hundred thousand dollars. We'll do it in stages, and that's what that resolution, I'm going to let Bill tell you a little bit.
Yeah, I think the main thing council needs to understand, and the people, is that we're not asking to do anything right now, we're asking for a resolution to be able to apply, but before we would apply, we'd come back to the council and say, here, that idea, we want to watch, we could approve that. So all we're doing, if we don't do a resolution, we're here now, we can't even apply anything. If we come up with something that's a workable, doable thing that everybody wants to do, we can't even apply. So right now, we're just needing a resolution so that we can put application in during this next fiscal year, whether it's trails and rails, if we come up with a viable product. So that's, that's really all it is.
And one of those things we do want to do is complete a walking trail. We could start here on, on that Pope Park with, you know, a walking trail, maybe playground and stations that exercise that and connect, but we got to come up with a plan, and this is going to give us the ability to start that. So, and I just, and that, any questions from council?
The, the idea is to be able to connect to, okay, throughout the city, from everywhere in the city.
Thanks for that, Cindy.
Buzz, wouldn't it be better just to start off with a track for women to go walk, you know? There's no place to block that for women, nobody to go.
Again, again, that, the track, they don't, that's not, that's not what.
Oh, they just give us money.
Yeah, well, this, it's a map, it's a twenty, it's a twenty.
They're twenty percent money then.
It's a, it's a twenty, maybe twenty map, but you can get up to a hundred thousand dollars of what they bring, and you can do it in sections, they'll do a little bit of the time.
Sorry, Buzz. I mean, is this possibly talking about utilizing the levees?
That is going to be up for discussion, but you can't use a lady, but you can make.
We have like twenty foot alligators.
We have cows.
We got huge alligators.
We don't know.
Okay. My grandkids were like, let's go look at the alligators, and I was like, let's not. Like, we're huge.
The man, the man, it initially started out with street wide, wide, it started at Vidalia Hospital, where they wind the streets, so there would be a, a bike path for.
Right.
But to me, that became a safety issue, just the thought of that, because certain towns today, it's restricted easy. And I've thought about it since way before we heard about it today, it's been talked about, and I still see no possible way of connecting Vidalia.
You must be aware of those bridges.
I'm a hundred percent against that, I'm a hundred percent against the little bridge going over.
I watched that goo crawl.
It may be pretty dangerous too, but, but, but what I'm saying, it started out with the widening of the streets and the signage. It was supposed to be where you could go down by the old railroad track.
Right.
And come through the orchard and find ways to get here. The riverfront idea is just, that's something that just got thrown in there, I didn't know about that, but at, at this point, I see nowhere for you to connect the city to here without somebody coming through or hazardous areas to get there. So, I mean, just, just for the sake of, to get some money, will we possibly come up with an idea? Not what we're doing. It's not what we're doing. What we're doing. We're not saying yes to get any money to do anything. What we're saying is, yes, you would allow the possibility if there's a plan that you could see a possibility, if you do, that is approved, that's all. Otherwise, if there's a plan, we might as well just know you can't work on it, or you can try to come up with anything, because we don't have the ability to fly.
But it puts, puts you in line, if you do come up with a plan and everybody approves it, and the funding will be available for you to might start making progress and do that.
Not, not ask, the city's not asking to, not by, to approve any funds or any particular project or anything right now, it's just opening the door so that if something is available in this next year.
I got that.
Yeah, okay, that's all it is.
Why does this grant require that we do this?
What do you mean, Paul, that's a.
Have we done all the grants, did you buckle?
We have, we have to get an application in within a certain length of time, by, by deadline day.
What property would you use for this?
We don't have a plan.
This is going to allow us to, to get the funding, if we do come up with something that works, we will be able to pursue it. This isn't, this isn't putting us on the hook to do it, okay? It's just giving us the end road. This man will not start or put us on the list or put us in line to get the funding if we don't get a resolution passed for us to investigate and study, so he won't get there. I mean, but right now, he's saying that he can get us approved for if we will do that and just do the studies and come to, he'll make sure the money's available, if people, if we come up with a plan, want to do it. If you don't, it goes away, we're not, we're not obligated for anything. I don't see where we have anything to lose but to look at.
Will this cost us a single dime in his fees, in his?
To just to pass whichever.
Yeah, that's, that's what I.
And I, no, absolutely not.
I want to see it, we go on and approve it based on if it's a plan A, B, and C in place on the safety of, uh, getting there.
Okay, motion made, I hear a second.
Is that a motion?
I'll say it.
Second made by Almond Dory, on the favor. Any opposed? Okay. Uh, before we go into, I'm going to get a motion, before I get a motion, go on executive session, I want, there's, there's some, uh, some residents here from DAB Lane Road who I think have, have showed up. What we can't do is, when you put you on the agenda for discussion tonight of the road, but I'm, we have to get out of executive session, we come back in here and finish our business. Uh, we're going to adjourn, we can adjourn to our chambers, and I want to visit with y'all and show y'all what we know up at this point dealing with the road at DAB Lane. I have, I have a map, and be glad to share with you, and stay as long as you want, we'll discuss the issue and the things that we've been able to discover dealing with that. But thank you for, for attending tonight, we certainly think it's an issue that needs to be logged, and we'll be discussing, so at this time-
And we may actually go open the public hearing, so we can all be a part of it?
Can we amend the agenda? That's what she's asking, can we amend the agenda so they can-
We were on the agenda.
There's, there's no-
Well, we were on the agenda, so.
No, well, let, let, there's, there's no action that we can take, and you're, whoever wants to come back there, or other, at least two of you can come back. It's, we, it's just to show them where the, I-
I've been living there fifteen years, Buzz, and I, I know you're just getting this, and I'm not trying to be in point to you or nothing, but I, I have been told by the other mayor that was here for however long, way too long, Austin, and Wes Shirley does not, the legislature is not open the road. I've been told this, and I'm tired, I'm tired of knocking all the jigs out of my butt, I'm going to tear my truck up.
Let me say, but we got, now, look, this might be something, why they're going to decide who owns the road, but I can, I can, I can tell you this, if the city of Vidalia is not the owner of that road, we cannot go in and just fix it. I'm sorry, now, we, to tell you-
The city didn't put that road in?
It, it doesn't matter who put it in, the city, even though they have funds, and this is what I want to share with y'all after. We will investigate and do our diligence and look to see, but I hate to get this into open meeting tonight, because there's no action can be taken, can we do our, and I'll be glad to visit-
But there is an action that we can take, we've, we've got, we need our voice heard too.
And if it's in the open, and, and the next meeting, we'll put you on the agenda, where we can get that, I mean, but this meeting tonight was-
One more thing added to that, we're, we're being told right now that nothing can be done. Somebody puts gray rock on that road ever so often, and somebody mowed that, and it's the city. The city fixes that road and puts gray rock on it.
No, they, they don't fix it.
Well, it fills the hole, though. Somebody's taking responsibility for the road to some extent, so we just want to know.
We'll say, we'll say. Well, I, I can tell you, there are some residents here today that want to know if it's our road or not, and I, you know, and we, until we, we can determine that, and look, I want to do it. And if it's our road, we will fix.
I just want, I just want to know, when can the city take the road over? Because I pay city taxes, because we already, if, if it's over there, I'd rather pay city taxes where we'd be taking them.
But you're not paying the city taxes.
I know, but at the end of the day, I'd rather, because we, we spent all this, we got more money in the road over there than spending nothing just on the port.
And look, I, I promise you, I, I hear what y'all are saying, I want to meet with you after we have our meeting, and I promise you, but please understand, one of the things that we will do, we're going to do things right.
That's right.
Even though you might have been told that was a city road, I don't, I can't tell you that, and I'm not going to spend, spend, uh, the, the ones who are residents, money to fix that if it's not a city road.
What, what, about five years ago, what, about three, eight years ago, hire a couple, send a guy out there, the, the city workers, they bought a little packer like it's here, and went across and spent sixty thousand dollars, we told him, and I told him, it's a waste of sixty thousand.
I understand, but you guess what? That did not mean it right.
But he paid it for the fucker.
All right, we got, look, I, I want y'all to stay, we're going, we're going to go into the back, I know you- Okay, do I hear most of them going into executive session? Motion made by Almond Dory, on the favor. I'll have my way back over here. Motion made, executive, executive session.
Make it.
Motion made by Almond Beth, second by Almond Road, on the favor. Okay, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Almond Beth, second by Almond Road, on the favor. We adjourned, thank you very much.